Okay, recording. Great. Well, I'd like to call to order today, Thursday, January 13th, Longmont Housing and Human Service Advisory Board meeting. And is there any public invited to be heard?
No, none.
None. Okay. Thank you, Erica. Then welcome to new members, Robert and Stacy. Do you want to each introduce yourselves and maybe tell us a little bit about you?
My last name is pronounced Putum. It's sense like Tulum and all kinds of things. Putum. I was a three-time member of the Long City Longmont Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And I ended that this year. I'm also a volunteer for the last three years, once a week for Meals on Wheels. Which I understand you're going to visit at some point in May. And I'll probably recuse myself from that because I've involved with it, right? To keep my kind of impartiality in place. I'm an editorial cartoonist. And I still do editorial cartoonists for a bunch of newspapers in the West. And I've become very acquainted with problems of housing and human relations, especially among the low-wage earners, retired senior citizens. I've watched other cities try to come to grasp, to come to terms with some of these major problems, including the homeless. So that's one reason why I thought I'd get involved, because I, quite frankly, I didn't know what Longmont was really doing. And one way to learn it, of course, is to be on the board. I'm also a volunteer for Wildlands Restoration Volunteers. I've done over 250 projects. And they're located here in Longmont. I'm also a backcountry ranger with Indian Peaks, James Peak Wilderness Wilderness Areas Alliance. I'm also on the board for my homeowners group, that kind of stuff. I have a college education, of course, in biochemistry. And currently make my, a good part of my living as a cartoonist. It just shows you that scientists can do a lot of things other than be confusing.
Well, we're glad to have you. And Stacy, welcome to you as well.
Oh, I live near Spangler Park off of Mountain View Avenue. That's part of Longmont.
Well, hi. My name is Stacy Duncan. I'm extremely pleased to be here. I'm, was so excited to learn that I was accepted to the board. I have lived in Longmont since 2001, which is stunning, because I don't think I ever lived anyplace before this for longer than three years at a time. So, so that's pretty neat. Probably as a function of raising kids and families and things like that. We have, we have three children and we are all in the area and our youngest is 18 and graduating from Niwa High School right now. We live in northeast Longmont. And I have been for the past, gosh, probably 12 years, working extensively and for long periods of time as a full-time volunteer with the single moms community in Longmont. So I've gotten to know a lot of, know more than maybe I care to even about a lot of the social issues here in Longmont. I, I have a real passion for, for making things work, not just having programs to have programs. So, so I think that I'm excited to, to use some of those experiences here on the board. I'm trying to think what else. I've just recently ended this, but up until now had been doing one weekend a month on a domestic violence call line, which is, gosh, that population is, oh, they need help, you know, so many volunteers and it's, it's so touching. So, ended that recently, also because I'm back to work on a part-time basis. I, my, Robert, my undergrad is in microbiology too. So funny, you should all have picked two scientists this time around. But I haven't actually worked in microbiology in quite some time, but you know, auxiliary industries and things like that. Right now I do marketing part-time for an instrumentation company in Boulder. And so my ability to volunteer full-time is not there. So this kind of came at a perfect time and just really excited to be here.
We're glad to have you, Stacy. And Caitlin, you made it. Sweet. I'm gonna hand it back off to you or our chair.
All right.
We made it through item three on the agenda. Welcome to the new.
Thank you. It has been one of those days, so. On top of one of those weeks. So, hi, welcome everyone. Let's see, oh, I just had the agenda up. There you go. So the next item is approving the minutes from our December 1st and December 9th meetings. Yes, Karen?
Maybe the new members would like to hear about us, too.
Yes, I would.
Okay. Do you want to go first then, Karen?
I've been on the board for two years. And let me see, I'm a board member for our HOA and I have a disabled son who I take care of. I, years ago, probably about 10 years ago, I went through the process of trying to get affordable housing, but we ended up doing, not doing that. But it's a background to what people have to go through to, to do that. I'm also a volunteer for CASA, court-appointed special advocate, and I volunteer at Hope once a week. And I joined the board just because I'm interested in, you know, especially middle, middle-income people trying to get affordable housing. Not just people that need affordable housing, but you know, regular people that have jobs and everything to get, you know. So it's, it involves a lot more than just that, too. So that's, that's my, and I've been in Longmont, let's see, I was in Longmont from 1981 to to 93, and then I moved, then I left and then moved back in 2012 and been here since. So seen a lot of changes in Longmont, for sure. And welcome, Stacy and Robert.
I've been in Boulder. I've been in Colorado since 1964 and lived mostly in Boulder. I just, I came to Longmont in 2006, something like that, bought a house here because I couldn't afford to live in Boulder.
Right. Graham or?
Albuquerque Balloon Festival behind you.
Yes. Actually, I'm not sure if it's Albuquerque. I think it's somewhere in Europe, but.
Oh, is it?
But I'm not 100% sure, so.
Well, I'm Graham. It's my fourth, yeah, fourth year on the, on the board. I got a degree in philosophy, so not a scientist at all.
I have a degree in philosophy from CU.
There you go. And I'm a contractor and, yeah, I love serving on this board. There's a lot of great people in the community doing a lot of good stuff. And I feel, you know, honored to be able to support that in some small way.
Great. Kimberly, do you want to go?
Sure. Welcome Stacy and Robert. My name's Kim Stringa. I'm also a scientist. At least I majored in biology, but now I'm a public health nurse and have been for almost 20 years, which led me to being a part of this group and just seeing the impact of unstable housing on communities, especially vulnerable communities. And I've really enjoyed being a part of this group. So welcome.
I've been, I've worked at, as in the laboratory at Boulder Community Hospital and also Longmont United Hospital for many, 18 years or so.
And I am Caitlin. This is my third year on the board. I've lived in Longmont for about five years. Stacy, I can relate to your comment about this being longer than I've really lived anywhere. As a kid, I remember I changed schools every year until like ninth or 10th grade, I think. And, and three years was about the longest that we ever, ever really lived anywhere. So five years in, in one city and getting connected to the board has been one of the, the better ways to, to be connected to the community. So I, I was a political science major, not a, not philosophy, maybe a little science in there. But I worked as an attorney for a few years. I no longer practice and I now work in tech. At least for another week or so. I don't know what I'm doing after that. I, I resigned last week, so we'll see what's next. But anyway. So that's, that's me. I think that's it for introductions.
Well. Shakina's like a personal liaison slash former board member.
And Erica and Elberto, too.
Yeah, so, um, thank you Stacy and Robert. I will say that this board did not choose you. I chose you to be on this, this board. Your interview was with city council and I was on city council. So, um, it's my fault that you're on this board. So, the rest of the board members can blame me or reward me and say yay, or either or. But, um, I will say they, they are wonderful people on this board. That's why I chose to be the liaison. It's just so much to learn. And each of you bring different perspectives that you will come, that will come up in the processes of what we do. I will say that our meetings sometimes can be very long. It's a lot of information. So when we get into it, you know, we have to like chop, 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 get on it, because we could be here till 10, 11 o'clock at night and none of us want that. Especially not me, especially my city council meeting was till midnight on Tuesday night. So, I'm just saying that. And I work full-time. I work for a nonprofit called YWCA. I'm director of community engagement and equity. So I do have a full-time job. I also have a consulting business as well. Caitlin, you who, I mean, great job. I, I guess I could say congratulations for quitting. I think great things are coming for you and, you know, so just look at it as wonderful opportunities. Yeah. So anyway, you all can always email me if you have any other questions about the board or, or anything else. Please do email me if you have any questions. So, so happy to see you here and welcome.
Erica, why don't you go and then I'll, then I'll go.
All right. So my name is Erica Mars, like Stacy knows earlier from our board meeting. But I am the administrative coordinator for community services. So you will be getting packets from me for the board meetings as well as links, any sort of communication that you need to rely over to Eliberto or Karen or anybody from staff, go through me and I can definitely get you there.
Thank you. So Stacy, I already told Stacy's Robert, but so I am Eliberto Mendosa. I've been here since 2007, actually. And I am the project coordinator for the community services department. I work with Karen on a lot of the initiatives that this board has insight or provides, does their work around advising on. A lot of times I will be the main presenter to this board because I do a lot of the work for this board. For example, as we get closer to the funding process, I do a lot of the, the creating the, the content for our conversations. For example, I set up all of the allocation formulas and, and things like that. So you'll be seeing, seeing a lot of me in these board meetings, of course, along with Karen, who is not here, she is our community services director. But yeah, my role is to support this board and do the work of community service department in the city. And I really, really value your time and your work here. So I am very appreciative of all that this board does. So, so with that, I think we've done, I think everybody's been introduced. We'll turn it back to Caitlin to lead us forward.
Fantastic. The next item on our agenda is approving the minutes from December 1st and 9th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes as presented in the packet?
Motion to approve.
In a second.
I can second.
Okay, Karen, seconded all those in favor of approving those minutes. Please raise your hand. All right. So, so approved. The next item is official posting location for this board's agendas. Eliberto?
I think that's Erica.
I was like, might be Erica, might be Eliberto.
Yeah, I know. I don't, I don't know where this, where this is posted. This is Erica's room.
Okay.
Um, so the official posting for the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board is outside of the Civic Center. The agendas are always posted right there, as well as on the City of Longmont's website. They are posted on there virtually as well for access. So either of the two places.
So I think, I think Caitlin, that we do need a motion for this.
Okay.
So, so Erica, so, so I think we need a more specific. So is it on the west side, north side? Where, where are they posted? On the west doors?
On the west doors.
On the west doors.
Okay. So I think, yeah, because I think we need a specific motion of where the designation is.
So do we have a motion to maintain doing them on the west doors of the Civic Center as well as online? Or does anyone have any questions before we do that? So that is where we have been posting them. I think when Civic Center was under construction, we did it on the north doors. But since it is now complete, we can do it on the west doors again.
Motion to keep the posting on the western doors.
In a second, please. All right. Robert has seconded all those in favor. Please raise your hand. All right. So approved. And draft work plan for 2022.
So now this is me and I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen just so for Robert and Stacy. Every year, this, this board adopts a work plan for the year. It is a guideline of what the things that we want to accomplish. Of course, throughout the year, there are things that come up. And so that this is not set in stone, but it does help us keep on task because there is a lot of work for this board to do. So I'm gonna share my screen. Can everyone see the Longmont Housing? Can everyone see the Longmont Housing Advisory Work Plan?
Yeah.
Good. So what we're gonna try and accomplish tonight, of course, we've done, we've done a new member orientation. We're gonna select officers for the coming year. And we're gonna discuss our site visit schedule. When, so we're gonna talk about that in February. Here's some of the things we're gonna do. It was the thing to really think about is there was funding that was not allocated. But we were, there was one project that the board was very interested in funding, but it was dependent on state funding. And we have not yet heard, because of, I'm assuming because of the pandemic and staff out over there as well. We have not been given final word. So we're gonna bring that back in February to hopefully finish that out because we need to bring it back before the council. We're also gonna discuss, we're gonna continue working on our 2023 funding process. I sent something to the board, I think at a December meeting, a model from Mile Highland Way that we want to explore. And if there's other ideas, then we can do that as well. And then I always put this, I think is important. I was talking to Stacy earlier, how valuable the human services needs assessment is. So I think it's important that we, you know, we take, it's a little bit of time and go back and look at it and think about whether things have changed. Do we want to do an update, et cetera? And then, you know, we're gonna look at CBDDG in March. We start doing our site visits, get them all reported out on. Hopefully this is what we start having, for those that are interested in housing. I think this is Kathy and Molly put these on the work plan for March to bring back the application for the, for housing. Just so you'll be aware, there have been time where they needed to do the applications, you know, a little more timely. So we, we've added them kind of last minute to agendas. We make sure we get to the information, but just be aware that that may happen. So I'm not gonna go into everything, but unless someone has a question, I just want to make sure that we review it. I think we have it to finalize it on 2022, on February. But just wanted to provide, provide it to the board and answer questions or take ideas. I don't know if we have a lot of, we need to do training. So there may be some training that the board may want. This would be a great time to offer ideas or training that the board would appreciate, that I could look into and bring back. So I guess I'll open it up for, we'll stop sharing and open up for discussion and, and for taking ideas.
Are there any questions or ideas that folks have that you want to bring up for the work plan? Um, excuse me. Eliberto, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're, we're trying to move up the submission date, maybe a little bit into August so that we can maybe spread out some of those, those long meetings. Because I see reviewing funding applications and then hearings and deliberations in September and October. Is that correct?
Yeah, like, like I told the board before, the only, the only, the only consideration to that is that we do, we do this as a collaborative partnership with Boulder County and the City of Boulder. And, you know, it'll be, we just want to make sure that they, they are, you know, aligned with our timing. So I think that is the plan, Caitlin, to, to start earlier so that we can spread out. Because that is really the bulk of the work of this, of this Housing and Human Services Advisory Board is reviewing and having those hearings.
I have a question. Just a, any site visits, are they done on the second Thursday of the month or is it?
Great question. No, the site visits, so we'll, we'll talk about that, those, that's in the agenda, but we'll talk about that. But typically they are done in, we, we try, Erica usually handles the coordination of the site visit. They can be done in person. They can be done virtual, depending on the comfort level of everybody involved. And they happen whenever people, I mean, I, I think we did, I think we did one on us, I think I did one with, with Karen on Saturday morning. So it's really, it's much more, it's more flexible than that. It's not, it doesn't happen like our meetings.
Okay. I just thought there may be one scheduled day of the month, you know, that you could write down in your local calendar.
No, no, Erica will coordinate those because she has to coordinate with board members and of course the agency leaders very well.
And, and typically, one or two board members do an individual site visit. We have enough of those happening that it doesn't make sense for every member of the board to do those site visits. So we, we break them up. Usually based on availability as well as what agencies folks may be interested in or haven't, don't know much about. It's a really great opportunity to learn more about the agencies that we are funding and see how they're doing and the impact they're making in the community.
So again, we're not gonna finalize the work plan till next month. If, if there's no ideas now, but if, if all, if somebody gets an idea between here and there, please, in particular around trainings, if there's something, I mean, we, it's been allowed since we do an evaluation training. We can do that, or data training, we can bring that, still allows us to do a best practice training. So that, you know, so if everybody has anything they want to know more about the process or then just, yeah, just you can email me or email Erica any ideas and we will finalize this plan in February.
Awesome. Thanks, Eliberto. Oh, Karen Phillips, sorry. I apologize. I didn't see your hand.
I, I just think that it's always good to have training on, on the evaluation process. You know, even, even a review, but I, I still think it's really important that we get trained how to, how to do the best we can when we have to evaluate these different agencies.
Okay.
Like to see.
Training. I'll find time. Okay. Yeah.
I, I would echo that. And I also think that one of the things that we, that sort of came through some of our conversations last year. Some of it comes out in conversations, but you know, we ended up waiting some things in the evaluation process is talking through those earlier than later, so that we, so that we know what those, some of those priorities are. I was also thinking for new and existing board members, it could, it could be helpful to see that needs assessment earlier. It's, it is a big, it is a big chunk of information and can be a little difficult to wade through. And I think the sooner we do it in the year to have like some review of what those needs are, giving access to folks, particularly if they have not seen it before, could be really helpful. So, Councilwoman Yarborough.
I think that is wonderful. I know, Eliberto, that's gonna be like a lot, but if we can coordinate that in enough time, you know, I think it is important. I think when I came on, I don't think I had a training. So because we do up, update these evaluations as we go, we look and see what worked, what didn't work. And I think it is important for our new members too, to see what we've done in the past and how we evaluated those organizations and their needs and everything like that. And then moving forward, because then they can give their perspectives or have a clear understanding when those needs assessment comes and come around and they can look and say, oh, they're not looking, this is not in that bucket or that bucket, right? And so I think it would be more beneficial if we could do that and maybe just have like one training and, and everybody would come to that training. I think that would be beneficial. And if you need anything from me, just let me know.
Yeah.
I'm not training, but let's get this straight. I'm not doing the training.
No, that's fine.
I bring the coffee or whatever, but.
Well, yeah, no, that's fine. Just for, for my own clarity sake. So what I'm hearing is a couple of things. One is a training, looking at how we evaluate these application applicants from our, but then also a review of our human services needs assessment, thinking of another look at that. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Or are we talking about those two things combined? Or, or do they each merit their own, their own session?
I was thinking of those as separate, but just because they, they impact each other, but they don't act like, they don't have to be done together. So like, I would say like, if we did something on the human service needs assessment, you know, even February, March, like early enough so that when we are talking about what the process is and how to do the evaluations, we're, we're all sort of a little fresher back on that needs assessment.
Okay.
And the new folks have seen it and are not like, trying to figure out what we mean by buckets and how this fit in with the, all of that. Because I think that that can be, that's a, it's a lot.
Okay. That's, that's great. That's great clarity. I was just wondering. Okay. Awesome. Well, we'll take a look at these minutes and we'll see if we can add that to it and I can work with Karen on developing something for the February meeting. Yeah. Or is that the March at the latest?
All right. Any other questions or comments on the work plan? Okay. We will come back to it next month to, to do the approval. Site visit schedule. Erica, is that you?
So Erica put it together, but I, either one of us can do this.
Okay.
So essentially there are 16 agencies that need to have a site visit this year. So what I was thinking is just the easiest thing to do is start them next month and do two per month so that we could get through the 16th and be done by September.
Okay. Question or comments? I think this is the last page in our packet. If anyone wants to see the schedule that was, that was put together.
And I can share it if needed, too. And I can share it if needed to.
Erica, is this based on the three-year cycle through site visits?
Yeah, that's correct.
Cool.
Well, well, the three-year cycle, and we have a tradition uh of. Doing a site visit with any newly funded agency that we've not funded in the past. So when I'm looking at this list, we haven't funded Focus Reentry and Centro Amistad. Uh Medicine Horse, we have funded Mother House, but it's been quite some time since they applied. We've not funded, the Queer Asterix and Saint Benedict's or. The reentry, so there's quite a bit of new agencies actually that we uh funded this year that we've not funded or. Either not funded in the past or has been quite some time since we funded.
Awesome, um and Erica, is the, is your thought that um folks would let you know which. Um site visits they'd like to to attend, and then you'll coordinate with them as the dates get closer for that?
That's correct, so I was kinda hoping that um you guys would decide what um which agencies you would like to visit, and then that way I can. Coordinate with the site contacts and yourselves to see what what your schedule's availability is, and then I can um set them up for you guys.
Um for your purposes is, do you want, I know, let's see, I think we've got. Six of us here, Deanna's not here, I think we're missing one, I'm.
Catherine is.
Catherine, so um.
Other say Brian is out too, but.
Yeah.
Here.
Um so I don't know if we need to, if it's easier, cause I think last time we had everyone on the the first call of the year. And so we kinda went through and raised our hands, but given that we're missing several folks, um do we want, do you wanna do something? Um have folks email you with their preferences, or do you wanna get preferences from folks on the call and then have the folks who aren't here send you information? What's the, what is the easiest way to do this?
So what I would suggest is because you guys are here, the the folks that are here tonight. Um it's basically first come, you get to pick the ones that you're very interested in. And then, yes, the rest can, you know, they they get to choose what's left.
Okay, uh Kim.
Um Alberto, do you mind just um bringing it up so we can all see it?
Yes, I will share it right now. Alright, can everybody see it right there, that's.
Um, I don't see anything.
I forgot to share, but.
And then Graham, did you wanna add something or have a question?
I was just gonna uh indicate which ones I'm open to visiting. If we're ready for that. Medicine Horse Program, Queer Asterix and Mother House.
Um. Let, should we, let's do it, um. Maybe from the top, Erica, what's easiest for you in terms of going through this, do you want us to go through the top and have people raise their hands if they wanna go to one? Do you want individual people to go through?
Yeah, that would probably be the easiest, just go down the list and if you wanna volunteer for that, yeah.
Okay, uh let's start with Attention Homes. Okay, so we've got Robert. Um and Karen. All right, um anyone else for that one? Okay, great. Um Boulder County AIDS Project. I'll do, Robert and I will go on that one.
Yeah, it's okay, and just, I you know, just to be safe, we should have no more than two of you at any one place at any one time.
Yes, and it's okay if we don't fill in two people, cause we've got three, we're not here, and so we'll make sure.
We don't have to have every place visited tonight, uh is just, I I would, I would, I've done, I've been on your side before. And I would say choose the ones that you are most interested in visiting.
Yeah, and um and if we get closer to it and something happens where folks can't make it because of schedules and so forth. Um I know that the staff will come back and ask if there's um other availability, so um. Community food share. So we've got Stacy and Karen. Um El Comite. Kim and Stacy. El Centro Amistad. Kim. And Graham. Um Focus Reentry. That's me. Um I had, what's that, what is that one?
What do you, I wanna know what that one is.
That's, I have a dream.
A dream. Oh, I have, I have a dream foundation, apologies, I shouldn't have done that, Robert. Okay, uh Longmont Meals on Wheels. Stacy. Medicine Horse Program. Graham and Caitlin. Mile High United Way. Okay, we've got no one for tonight, uh Mother House. Graham, Caitlin and Robert. And that doesn't necessarily mean all three of us will go, but as we get closer in scheduling, um we can figure out who will be there. Um Saint Benedict's Health Ministry. Okay. Um you can put me down for that one, Erica. Queer asterisk. Graham. Safe Shelter. Robert, Karen and Stacy. The Reentry Initiative. Karen. And Via Mobility. Okay, no one for that one, so we've got a few that are open, we, I think we've got plenty of options for our folks who are not here. And then if um if we have any that are still um that don't get sort of first round um folks going, Erica, obviously, we can bring those back. And make sure we get um board members. All right. Any other, anything else you need for that, Erica, right now?
No, really, um I was just more worried about the February site visits, just because, you know, to schedule, um but that works perfect for me.
Awesome. Okay. And let's see. The next item is officers um for this year. Twenty, we, so we typically elect a chair and a vice chair, Alberto, do you wanna speak to that at all, or?
Yeah, so basically, the um the chair position is the uh person who. Facilitates and leads the meetings, uh begins the meetings and uh asks for a motion to end the meeting. Uh we, Karen and I tried to send this person, and I emphasize the word try, because it doesn't always happen. Uh we try and send this person uh 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 the agenda ahead of time to get their perspective on it. Uh if they have other ideas or think have other priorities. Um and of course, the vice chair stands in if that person is unavailable, uh and I think that's basically the duties of the chair.
And and then the chair usually attends the um council meeting when we present funding recommendations, um however. You know, I attended the last one and Ellie Berto and Karen um stole the show. And did amazing presenting the recommendations, and so I, there were no questions or anything from council, so I was there uh just to wave. So, um. Do we have any nominations, or let's start with, do we have any questions about what these roles are before we we dive in? Okay. In that case, do we have any nominations, including self-nominations for chair?
Well nominated Caitlin for chair.
Um Alberto, can can someone serve as chair two years in a row? I've I've remember there being some, something, but I don't remember.
I I am looking at the bylaws right now, because I I think so, but I'm, I am looking at the bylaws. I believe you can, but.
I thought Brian was for two years.
Yeah, I believe so, I I don't.
Is it, is it maybe there's like a, I can't remember, for some reason, I thought there was a reason Brian couldn't do it again, but I don't remember, like, maybe I might just be making something up. Completely.
Oh, okay, okay, here it is. The term for office of the chair and right chair will be filled for one year, officer to be reelected, but may not serve more than two consecutive full terms. Just done one.
Got it.
So yes, you are, you you have one more that you can serve as.
Okay. Well, thank you, Graham. Any other nominations for chair? Okay, I think, I think then we have to, we actually have to vote on that, even if it's one, so all those in favor of Caitlin. Okay, um all opposed?
It's new as I can tell, reading the bylaws, which I have in front of me here, uh there's nothing says you can't do six. Uh a chair can't do successive terms.
That's correct. Okay, and I'm abstaining from the vote. So, uh I think, so that was a four to zero to two, Robert, were you abstaining from the vote, or did you wanna vote? Okay, um Karen, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay. Thank you all. Um so we will also need a vice chair, do we have any nominations for vice chair, Karen?
Yeah, I uh nominate Graham for a vice chair again. He did a great job and he's been here long too, so that's why. Nominate.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of Graham as our vice chair for twenty twenty two. Alright, we've got five opposed. And abstaining, you're abstaining from your own vote, Graham. Alright. Well, we will do this again, Graham, and then we will hand over the reins because we will not be able to do it again. Okay, thank you, everyone, um the last item we have is announcements or other business. Do we, Karen?
Yeah, is there anything we can do with the Marshall Fire thing in on the board, I mean. I don't know, is there anything?
I I can let Shakita speak to this, but I think city council is addressing, and they've asked for. I was at the city council meeting on Tuesday and city council member, Susie of Fairing brought this up. And so I think city council is addressing how they can support um the Marshall Fire with their contingency. Um so uh I know that that our legal and our city manager is looking into that, Karen.
Thanks. You said it, Alberto, that's right, so um. Councilwoman um Suzie Hadogro Fairing, she brought it up because there are a lot of teachers who were also affected by those fires. And she's also a teacher herself, and we have a contingency fund, and so she uh made a motion to. Uh for us to give twenty thousand out of our contingency fund um to those victims. Um so we have to get that approved, and so we have our city attorney who's working through that to make sure that we can do that. So yeah, it has been brought up.
And just so you're aware, I mean, um you know, I used to be on the board of the Community Foundation in Boulder County, and so I get, I think I get a lot of communication from from the. Foundation, I'm also right now serving with Madeline on the board of the Longmont Community Foundation. Um and um Boulder County has done a really good job of of um. Gathering support, uh last I heard, they had over fifty thousand donors and over nineteen point five million dollars.
Yes.
For uh victims of the Marshall Fire, so there is a lot of community support going to to these folks.
Um Alberto, I had one question, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask, or if it's something that um can take back. Um I know that there have been a few organizations that specifically um provided low. Um provide rentals for low-income folks in our communities, and um a few of them have announced waivers of the income requirements. Um and I'm curious about um. Whether and how that impacts their, you know, sort of like, you know, whether Longmont Housing Authority is gonna be doing that or not. And for those other organizations that are that are waiving those requirements, um I I think my concern is that, obviously, there's a huge amount of support. For um folks who have been affected by the fire, and I'm concerned that like some of the most affordable options for the lowest income in our community. May, you know, sort of be shifted um in a way that um means that those are not not accessible to the folks who can least afford it. And so um I don't know whether anyone at in the city or at the county level even is looking at that and sort of the responses and. Equity around that, so I'm kind of wondering. I'm just wondering more about that from the perspective of like um affordable housing grants and those types of things that some of these organizations may have.
Um. That's a great question that I can't answer at this point, I've heard of that as well. Uh I I thought I heard that it was the counties uh that was doing it through their. Um uh Boulder County Housing Authority, I I I have not heard anything, but Karen would probably be the person to ask about LHA. I don't think we're doing that in LHA, oh.
So, yeah, Longmont Housing Authority is also um, I believe it's like three or four units at different uh of the. Different properties that are also um leasing those, um and I know that they're only leasing it for one year. So, doesn't matter what the, if they qualify, don't qualify, but they will be able to lease it for one year.
Okay, Erica knows more about what's going on at LHA than I do.
Okay.
But I will say that Boulder County also, um they're, they are doing a month-to-month. Um leasing throughout Boulder County, so it's not a yearly lease, but it is a month-to-month.
Alright, um I, and this is um just some of, some of the concerns I've heard, Alberto, and I don't know if passing them along to Karen. Is that, you know, that waiving, for example, some of the documentation, because people may have lost all of their paperwork, waiving, you know. Um lease ending fees and that sort of thing makes a lot of sense, the the income requirement, I I had heard, I've heard some concerns from community members. That, you know, um in some areas of Boulder County, people have been waiting years sometimes to get into affordable housing. And, you know, obviously, losing your home is not something that like, I don't want, I I don't want it to feel like people are pitted against each other. We have a massive tragedy in our community um with the fire, and we also have a massive uh. Concern around affordable housing more broadly, and so um wanting to make sure that folks who. Cause I, I've seen like comments and people talking about like, hey, I've been waiting for four years to get into affordable housing, haven't gotten there. And now like, I'm gonna get pushed down the list, uh I don't know that that's what's happening, but you know. You know, some of our most vulnerable communities then are being pitted against each other for this affordable housing, and that, that's really concerning to me. Um because obviously, they're not, none of those folks are at fault for 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 where we are in in housing prices right now. Um so.
I I I appreciate those concerns, and I will be, Karen is the one who's really more involved on affordable, the regional housing collaborative. She's a part of that that group, so I will definitely relay that to her, um and of course, Shakita can. As as a councilperson can have her her influence as well, um you know, BCPA or the Boulder County Housing Authorities is. You live by the, ultimately is led by the commissioners, right, so.
Yep.
So yeah, I I I hear that, and I will definitely let Karen know the concerns you're hearing and your concerns about this issue.
Thank you, thanks for bringing that up, that's a really good point, and um I mean, I know there's been talk of rebuilding those. You know, people from the um from the Marshall Fires. from the Marshall Fires may come and, you know, may not want to live there anymore, want to live in Longmont, and what happens then, you know, we have such a shortage of inventory as it is. So, yeah, it's a lot of talks going on, but I didn't really, what you brought up is a really good point, and definitely I will address that for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, it's 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 hard. I mean, we, we've also heard people who are like, my insurance company never like encouraged me to increase my coverage, and so like my coverage is what my house was worth ten years ago, and there's no way I can rebuild with what they're they're going to give, you know, and so it's very there's no, there's no good outcomes there, and so whatever we can do to try to make things more equitable along the way. Shakita, I I got some information from a community member who I guess like there's someone at CU who has studied responses to tragic, like fires and floods and so forth, particularly like there was a lot of research post Katrina in a lot of the communities affected there and how some of the immediate responses actually increased inequity, but that some things helped improve it, and so I'd be happy to send that your way as something that might, the council might be interested in taking a look at.
That would be awesome. Absolutely. Of course, thank you. And then thinking about these with the needs assessment too, moving forward, you know, last time we were just talking about people who didn't, who needed internet access, right, during the pandemic, staying at home all day. You know, here we are with some other issues that we really have to take into effect and think about that when you're doing these evaluations and these assessments, so think about that too.
All right. Other announcements or business that we need to go over? I would be remiss if I did not say that I am certain that Boulder County's MLK Day events are coming up on Monday, and I am fairly certain that Madeline would love and appreciate seeing the faces of board members and staff members there. I don't know the specifics of that event. I do know that they they were doing something and have events, so check out the the city and the county webpages for what those official sponsored events are for for MLK Day.
Well, I know Lafayette is doing a car drive event for MLK, because usually they walk and have a speaker and things, so they're doing, like, the youth usually put that on in Lafayette. Sunday, the NAACP kicks off at the Dairy Center. They have someone from Weathers, are the one who took all the pictures of the civil rights movement, the marches and everything. So his daughter created a foundation, and so that will be kicked off at the Dairy Center on Sunday at one o'clock.
One thirty.
One thirty. There you go, Eliberto knows.
Well, I just, I just looked it up.
And and then Monday is at Silver Creek High School in Longmont, where they do all of their MLK events, and of course, they are, you know, having COVID precautions and and everything. Everyone has to have a mask, and I think when you walk in, you do have to show that you've been vaccinated, from my understanding, I believe that that's the case, so, yeah.
And it looks like they're going to offer those options through Zoom as well for folks who either can't or are uncomfortable attending in person. Okay, if there are no other announcements or other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
First meeting, y'all.
Yes.
They will be longer.
Yes.
The dice is
Yep. All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. See you all next month.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.